20 is now called to order at 7:00 PM. Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borger.
Here.
Vice Chair Burke.
Here.
Mrs. Capwell.
Rebecca, you're mute. You're still mute. Rebecca.
Well done.
There we go.
I know. It won't unmute.
No, you're... Well, just say "here" when it comes green.
It's not turning green.
Oh, there. Our thumbs up.
Can you hear me now?
There we go, yeah.
Yeah, I'll just have to keep myself off mute. It doesn't want to turn back on and off. Here.
Mrs. Kepiscus. Didn't quite hear that, Lynn?
Hear.
Got it. And Mrs. NATO is absent this evening.
That's right. Before we start the business section of the meeting, I would like to remind the audience that we have posted this agenda on the Secretary of State's website as well as the Wensocket Education Department's website. We have stated on the agenda that this is a teleconference meeting and provided the different ways of joining this meeting. In addition to the dial-in phone number and the website link, the public can tune into W O O N Radio, Channel 1240 FM Radio, or Channel 99.5 for FM radio. I'd also like to remind the audience that we are holding this meeting pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order recognizing the need for people to maintain a safe distance from one another during the COVID epidemic and allowing public bodies to convene virtually for the purpose of conducting essential business. In accordance with that order, the committee's meeting tonight is for the purpose of conducting essential business only. And for this reason, the meeting will not include a public comment period. At this time, why don't you join me in a moment of silence and we'll think about, hopefully, bringing peace to our community, to our state, and to our country. And now for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dr. McGee, recognitions and announcements, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Wensocket Education Department, in conjunction with SEDEXO Food Services, will provide free meals to children during the summer at the following sites: Hamlet Middle School, Coleman Elementary, Citizens Elementary, and Harris Elementary. Each site will be open on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays from 11:00 to 1:00. The meals that will be distributed on Mondays will be for Monday and Tuesday. The meals that are distributed on Wednesday will be for Wednesday and Thursday. And the meals that are distributed on Friday will be for Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So they'll get a little extra for the extra days. There are no income requirements for registration. Any child or youth aged 18 years old or younger may come to each of the sites for their meal. Each year, the United States Department of Agriculture partners with local organizations like the Wensocket Education Department to provide free meals to children when school is out for summer. A press release regarding the program went out last week to our city officials, newspapers, and local broadcast systems. I want to thank SEDEXO and Ellen Schalvey for their continued dedication to serving our students, our children here in Wensocket each summer. So this is no different than any other summer. This would normally be occurring with or without the COVID crisis that we're currently in. Secondly, I just want to recognize our Good Night Wensocket, which is an opportunity every Sunday at 7:00 PM. A member of our community, some of us here in this group have read stories to our families from the beginning of the school year. And that continues even though we are not in school. We are still providing this great opportunity for our families. It's an opportunity to promote the importance of literacy and also bringing families together. We've reached well over 10,000 hits for the school year. So that's amazing. It really has taken off, and taken off so much so that earlier this year, we met with Commissioner Infante Green and RIDE basically took our idea and has created, or they're in the process of, I'm not sure if they've actually created their own type of read aloud for families in the state. So very proud of the work that we've done with Good Night Wensocket. I want to recognize both Heather Neal and Jess Donato. It was their idea in the beginning of the year. And we're looking forward to continuing Good Night Wensocket through the summer into next school year. And that is all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Dr. McGee, regarding the summer food program, every year, there's an outing that's done at the World War II Veterans Park. Is that being done late in the summer? Do you know?
I haven't heard. I can reach out to Ellen Schalvey to find out. Usually, you're right. It's in the beginning of the summer, the very, very start of the summer. My sense is that they're probably not going to do it because of the social distancing. And as you said, it was done at the Splash Park. And there were just tons of children in there and families that were there enjoying some hamburgers and hot dogs and some fruit and veggies and then going in for a little Splash Park fun. So I haven't heard anything, but I will reach out to Ellen to see if there's any plan on doing it later this year.
Some kind of, even if it's a grab-and-go, something special? Because basically, that day, when you looked at who we fed, the entire park was fed. Anybody in the park could come up and get some food. So I don't know if they're planning on a grab-and-go event, because maybe that's Google. But it's worth checking.
Yeah, I can find out. I'll let you know.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments for Dr. McGee?
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chair Burke.
You know, it was interesting that over these days of remote learning, that oftentimes, I saw in the media stories about people doing good-night meetings. And they were praising themselves, how wonderful they were. And then I thought to myself, "We've been doing this since the fall. The Wensocket Education Department's been doing this already." So kudos to Heather and Jessica.
They've got nothing on us.
Folks are going to follow the best. And so that's what they're doing. That's great. Anyone else? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the recognitions and announcements. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Next, I will make a motion to approve the June 10, 2020, open session minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. Any corrections, deletions, amendments to the minutes? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
I can't hear them. I can't do anything.
It's frozen.
Yeah. We can hear you.
Oops.
Thanks, July.
Turned into Caroline.
I think we lost her. Well, we have three votes. Thank you. Next, we'll go into the consent agenda. I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. Any school committee member want to take anything out of the consent agenda for further discussion? Hearing none, Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke. Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Lynn, can you hear us?
Chairman Borger, I'm guessing it's something on Prospect Street because the internet, it's very difficult on this end to get anything to open or do anything. So she just may be experiencing what I'm experiencing too.
I think you're right. Anyway, we have a majority. And so the consent agenda is approved. Next, we'll go into Dr. McGee's report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I have two items for my report. The first is the 2020-21 school reopening. And the second is an update on the district strategic plan. I'm going to start with the school reopening. As the committee knows, we've established some groups here in the district to begin the planning process for reopening our schools in August, on August 31st. We first started with a reopening task force, which is made up of approximately 15 people, both within the school department and outside the school department. It's made up of people such as the Public Safety Director, the Chief of Police, the Fire Chief. The mayor is a part of that, Mr. Borger, Mrs. Kepiscus, as well as other members of our school department. So that task force, their charge is to oversee the process that is going to begin officially on Monday. The next meeting for the task force is scheduled for tomorrow from, I think it's 1:00 to 2:00.
1:00 to 2:00.
From 1:00 to 2:00. It's going to be at the Hamlet Middle School Library. We also put together some working groups here in the district, which will be charged with putting the actual components of the plan together. And we have four working groups. One of the working groups is the reopening operations. The second is health and safety. The third is instruction. And the fourth is social, emotional, and mental health. And each of those working groups, we have approximately 15 to 20 or so members. As I said, they're going to be working on those specifics for the plan. We're going to be conducting those meetings, both in person and virtually. Because as you know, as part of the phase that we're in Rhode Island is you can't have more than 15 people together in one indoor location. So those meetings are going to begin on Monday. We have, our first meeting is going to be with the reopening operations. And that's going to be from 8:00 to 10:00 AM. It's going to be at the Hamlet Middle School Library. The second group is going to meet after. That's the instruction. They're going to meet from 12:15 to 2:15 at Hamlet Middle School in Room 124. The third group, Health and Safety, is going to be meeting from 2:30 to 4:30 at the Hamlet Middle School Library. And the fourth group, the Social Emotional Group, is going to be meeting on Tuesday, the 30th, from 12:30 to 2:30 at Hamlet Middle School in Room 224. We also, a group of us had a meeting this afternoon with an organization that the Department of Education is using to work with all districts in the state around their reopening plans. And they're called the District Management Group. It's a Boston-based consulting firm. And they're working, as I said, with all districts, but very closely with six of the core districts, Wensocket included. So they're going to be working closely with us, East Providence, Providence, Cranston, Pawtucket, and Central Falls. We're going to be part of a cohort. And we'll be sharing ideas as we go through the process of putting our plans together. As I said, we met with them for the first time today. We're going to be meeting with them next Tuesday for an hour with the other urban districts that are part of our cohort. So the cohort is meant to share ideas with the other districts. They grouped us with those other urban districts because we share some of the same concerns, same populations, et cetera. So I'm excited about the work we had. As I said, a really good meeting with this group today. We shared with them where we are in the process. We shared with them what we learned from our distance learning in the spring. And they took a lot of notes. So we're going to continue, as I said, working with them in conjunction with our working groups as well. RIDE submitted, or I should say, sent out to all districts last Friday two things that were expected. They sent us the Back-to-School Rhode Island Health and Safety Guidance to reopen Rhode Island's elementary and secondary schools. And they also sent us a template, which we're going to utilize to create these plans. The components, as I said earlier, which is our working groups, are the ones I just mentioned. And those are the groups that RIDE is mandating that each district create to put the plans together. So we have all of the guidance. I've shared the guidance with all of the members of our working groups. I've shared it with the school committee. And I've shared it with the union. So everybody's on the same page. Also shared it with all of our district administrators. So everybody is familiar with what that guidance and the guidelines look like as we put our plan together. As I stated last time, we're going to need to put three plans together. You know, one plan, looking at a full return. Another plan, which would be a partial return. And a third plan, which is another form of a partial return, which is dependent on the number of people you can have in a pod or in a group that would be staying together during the course of each day. There are many questions that we have that are yet to be answered by RIDE and by the Department of Health. The main question that I have and many other superintendents have as well is will there be an opt-out for parents, families, and staff? And when I say an opt-out, what I mean is if we get a family that says they don't want their child to come back in person, that they would prefer virtual distance learning to continue, what are the parameters? And those parameters haven't been established yet. So we're looking at, we being myself and my colleague superintendents are looking for more guidance from the Department of Ed when it comes to that. Because to me, that's really the first part of this process is what do we say to families who say, "I don't want to send my child back"? Are there parameters such as, would they need to get a waiver due to health concerns? Or other types of concerns or issues that they may or may not have? Same thing with staff. We're waiting for some guidance on, if a staff member says, "I'm not comfortable coming back", would they still have to come back? Would that, again, be based on a health concern? If a staff member fell into one of the two categories of being 65 or older and/or has an underlying health condition, would that be acceptable for a waiver? It probably would be. Beyond that, we don't know. So we want to make sure we get these questions answered before we move too far ahead in the process. But the plan itself that we're putting together will not necessarily take those two things into consideration because we're going to have staff who will be back. And we're going to have staff that will not be back. And we're going to have students that will be back. And we'll have students that will not be back. We just have to make sure in those three plans that we're providing opportunities for all of them to be successful. I know I just gave you a lot of information. If you have any questions, I would be happy to try to answer them.
Let me ask you, Dr. McGee, again, the operating groups, what are the four operating groups?
So the first operating group, and not in any particular order, but the reopening operations, health and safety, instruction, and social, emotional, and mental health.
And how many folks, how many members of each committee did you have? Did you say 20 for each committee?
So...
Or did you say 20 in all?
No. We've got about 15 to 20. The smallest group is the social, emotional. And these are folks that are on the work groups, but they may not attend every single meeting. We just wanted to make sure we included enough constituents so that we would get enough voice from folks who need to share feedback. The ultimate decisions are made by the task force. The task force will take what these working groups are going to put together and will sort of make the final decision. And ultimately, the school committee on July 15, which is two days prior to when the plans are due to RIDE, will look at the plans and will provide the ultimate feedback before we submit the plans to RIDE.
Okay. So how often do you plan on meeting with your groups, the subgroups, the operational groups? Are you planning on having, meeting more than once a week?
We're going to have, yeah. We're going to need to because we really only have two and a half weeks to put this together. So we haven't established the second meeting for each of the groups. We're going to do that on Monday and Tuesday when those groups meet. They'll schedule the next meeting. But yeah, I anticipate that they'll be meeting multiple times each week.
Wouldn't you say these plans are very theoretical and very estimatable? I mean, I've read all 40-something pages of this. And you and I have had discussions on this. It seems to me that we can't nail down every possibility of how to handle this reopening. And once the schools are reopened, what happens during that first, second, third week?
Right.
The plans will be nice. But I mean, at the end of the day, I think there's going to be a lot of going with the flow and having contingency plans can be the most important one. Because we always can go back to stay at home until we have a vaccine. And frankly, that's the safest way to go.
Yeah, you're right. The plans are going to be fluid. It'll be a work in progress. And when RIDE submitted a couple of weeks ago their initial guidelines, not as specific as the ones that they sent to the districts last Friday, there were three phases. And one of the three phases was when we actually get back to school, whatever that looks like, it's going to be fluid. And we're going to be making decisions based on things we encounter. Because we're not going to think of every single thing leading into submission of our plan. It's impossible because there are just so many things to take into consideration. But each of these working groups will be working on those specific areas to get us started. But you're right. I mean, at some point, we're going to be making decisions based on the number of staff that are in their classrooms and the number of students that are coming to school. We'll definitely, you know... So we're going to need to be very flexible. And we will be very flexible with these plans as we start the school year.
I guess there's going to have to be a lot more communications, more than usual communications with parents and their families. Because even though we have the plans down or you have a good idea, the parents are going to be lost. It is, yes, well, we stay at home. But now you're sending my child to school. My child coughs at the bus stop, and the child isn't allowed on the bus. Then what? How many students can you put on a bus? What happens when you deliver them and they get off? And all that time that already the clock is ticking and the school day is going by. So there's going to be a lot of inefficiencies as we get going. And then it's the pickup at the end of the day. Like I said again, it's going to be really going with the flow. And if it's not working, then you need to have a trigger point when you decide we stay home.
Right.
Because until we have this vaccine, the last thing we want is a surge like some of the southern and western states are incurring right now. We don't want to be that district, that particular district that all of a sudden we get COVID in droves. Because we will have wasted a lot of time and we will have put a lot of people in danger.
Agreed.
We already know that. So, okay, so tomorrow is a meeting at 1:00. Do we enter by the back entrance or the front entrance?
We can enter through the front because we'll take the elevator up to the second floor.
Because 124, was that any of them? 124 is in no shape for us to sit anywhere.
No.
No, no. So, okay. Any comments from members of the school committee? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the superintendent's report. Is there a second?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I have one more item. The district strategic plan. That's okay. So just to update the committee on the district strategic plan, as the committee knows, we started this process in person in February. And then it quickly, in March, turned to a virtual district strategic planning process, which I've got to say is going really well so far, surprisingly. The folks that we're working with, they've never done this virtually. So we're really sort of their first group to test this out with. And it's gone really well. But just to give you a sense of where we are, there are three phases of this process. Phase one was building the foundation, which included meetings with different focus groups. Some members of the school committee were a part of that. We met with focus groups, including administrators, teachers, and community members as well. We collected data, both internal and external data around academics, social, emotional, attendance, graduation rate, just a real plethora of data. Phase two was informing and analyzing the data[1624.46] in in which we created a steering committee, which was made up of primarily of community organizations, which looked at our district's mission and also looked at the challenges we face, the opportunities we have in front of us and some of our our successes here in the district. The the most recent meeting that we had was with ending the ending of phase two in which a large group of of district staff, including teachers and administrators and district level staff, looked at our our mission and our core values. We've created a a new mission, which really isn't completely different from our existing mission. We sort of tightened it up a little bit. And we're in the process of we've created our our core values and our our common themes or pillars. This strategic plan is going to look a little different from the last strategic plan in that this one is going to have four very distinct pillars. And from those pillars, we're going to be creating objectives and initiatives. And also, we're going to be working on the vision. So we have about four more meetings left. And then ultimately, this strategic plan, three-year strategic plan will go to the school committee for approval in August. So we're we're moving along nicely. I I feel really good about where we are. And I think it's going to be very concise. And I think it's going to be, I think it's going to be a good plan.
Very good. Speaking of August, since we were speaking about that month, it it appeared if we're going to be going back to school in August, the end of August, it it makes sense to me that the school committee meets live in August, starting in August. And I think we need to reconfigure the 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 Hamlet cafeteria for social distancing and and the like, and also the limits of the the visitor limits that we're going to have to establish in that in that room. So I've talked to Director of Operations and he's already starting to think about that. But it's something that we have to visit to be able to so that if we're going to go to Hamlet for our school committee meetings beginning in August, until hopefully not that we have to go back home to distance learning. But if everything goes well, then we should we should stop meeting in August. Because I believe the school committee is going to give the example to the rest of the district. I mean, how can we how can we ask folks to go to school if we're not willing to do the same? So that's something that we've got to be planning as we go ahead in the next few weeks. And that's part of the August timeline. I don't know if anybody has any thoughts about that. Okay, I'll make a motion to receive and place on file a superintendent's report. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. Dr. McGee roll call.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Next, we'll discuss the Technology Subcommittee update. We'll have that update. I'll turn it over to Mrs. Capwell and Vice Chair Burke.
Great, thank you so much, Chairman Borje. Don, if you're okay, I'll just I'll take it.
Go ahead.
Great. So the June sixteenth Technology Session took place at six P M via Google Meets. The first agenda was the approval of the May nineteenth Tech Subcommittee meeting minutes. The minutes weren't quite ready for the committee review and approval. Therefore, we made the decision to defer until next meeting. Our second agenda item was the distribution and collection of Chromebooks from the students. So as far as collection goes, the Chromebooks have been collected from the senior class. There are just a handful of outstanding collections that they are already actively working on, but overall deemed quite successful as far as the number of Chromebooks that they were able to readily collect. As far as the other Chromebooks out with the student population, a conscious decision was made to leave the Chromebooks with all other students for the summer, specifically to support any program or initiative that would come out of the Department of Education. There's conversation around them pushing some of these programs and or initiatives. And additionally, to support our normal summer extended school year as well as summer literacy programs. There was a discussion, just in keeping with the fact that the Chromebooks are staying with the students over the summer around the Go Guardian application and any notifications that come in. This was a topic that was brought up by Director Webb in in conversation and then also proceeded with Al Natoriani to indicate that from the Go Guardian application, only alerts that would be responded to or reacted to as if a student's part of one of their programs. An example would be some sort of self-harm report that would come through. That type of report would still be monitored and reacted to. As far as next year, the Technology Department is evaluating what the approach is going to be for kindergarten students and or any other students that come into the district. We then touched upon, and so once that process is is solidified, we'll we'll bring that back as part of a an update. As far as distance learning, we did touch upon data and privacy. At the time that we met at the end of that week, the the we we basically owed the ACLU an update on any agreements we have with any cloud computing services. Al had indicated during the course of our conversation that the ACLU has found sponsors within the General Assembly with some potential pending litigation for monitoring home usage of of school Chromebooks, but no real indication as to when that legislation would pass. Would pass, I apologize. We did talk about and as we talked about the last meeting that there would be going to the Policy Subcommittee some updates for the student handbook as it pertains to the usage of technology in the home. We would anticipate, at least this is what we were discussing, but I would defer to Lynn, some sort of update midsummer to allow for the handbooks to be ready for the upcoming school year. We touched upon telephone systems. We're still actively exploring the consolidation of Internet and phone services. While it's still an exploratory exercise at this time, we just want to remind the group that we would only make some sort of move if we were able to get better service at the same and or lower cost. And we expect that by the next time the Subcommittee meets, we should have an update on this, again, exploratory only exercise. In wrapping up, we did talk about security cameras. As we had given an update to the School Committee the last time we met is that for very little cost, there was our an ability to go through and update the existing camera security systems at our elementary schools. Those security cameras will be about four to five cameras at each at each school at key locations. They have already installed them at Citizens Elementary School. Electricians at the time we went were met were pulling the lines at Globe, then at Coleman and going through successively to essentially get all elementary schools outfitted with updated cameras prior to the commencement of school. There is discussion that there will need to be some conversation within the Policy Subcommittee around cameras and recording. But again, per view of the the Policy Subcommittee, at a minimum, we ended with that we will ensure we are following Rhode Island statutes with regards to any signage that reporting is in progress. And as a reminder for the group, the only camera that is going to be recording is at the front entryway. We finalized our meeting with a decision to hold our next Subcommittee meeting on August the fourth.
Vice Chair Burke, do you have anything to add to Mrs. Capwell's report?
I I do have one comment. Yes, the the Technology Committee has now set the bar in a record by having the Subcommittee meeting in fifteen minutes.
No, 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 I'll correct you. We made sure it was sixteen minutes. We would not stop at fifteen. Thank you.
I must I must say, Mrs. Capwell, your report almost took that kind of time.
I'll remember that the next time.
I stand corrected.
Thank you so much. Any other comments for technology for the for the Subcommittee? When you, Mrs. Capwell, when do you think the cameras for all the schools are going to be implemented for the elementaries? I know you've got citizens. Is there a plan to have this done?
They they are absolutely confident that it will be done before school starts.
Excellent. Okay. I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the school Subcommittee report for technology. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. Dr. McGee roll call.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Next, we'll go into new business. I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the Student Education Records and Confidentiality Policy for First Passage. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Kepiscus. And I'll turn it over to you, Mrs. Kepiscus, to lead the discussion.
As you may recall, we began a discussion of this policy when I gave an overview of the last Policy Subcommittee meeting, which occurred on June eighth. Essentially, this is an update to our FERPA policy, which is the Federal Education Rights and Privacy Act. We had discussed that this new proposed policy builds off our most recent FERPA policy, as was proposed by prior Council Joe Cooper. There are two key changes with regard to the right to confidentiality. The amendment is intended to provide clear and descriptive language as to who is a school official who may be permitted to see school records. That is, records in which the school official has a legitimate educational interest. And that's to prevent access to records. For example, for a staff member who might be taking an appeal of a disciplinary hearing, that sort of thing. Some other key changes with regard with phrasing and formatting of the policy to meet our goals of overhauling our policies in full, to try to make those policies more user-friendly, to eliminate the legalistic language. There were some issues raised with regard to that directory information that we talked about at the last meeting. Directory information is information that can be shared with that with the public without consent. And there were some concerns about it being shared with the military, drafting or recruiting officers. And basically, the FERPA policy, as is required by law, provides an opt-out for parents. This is now done as part of the handbook process, so that's built right into the handbook. So essentially, this is the new policy, which builds off the old policy. It's an amendment. It's an effort to try to clean up our policies. And it's before you for first passage with the recommendation unanimously of the Policy Subcommittee.
Does anybody have any comments, additional comments regarding this policy? Dr. McGee roll call.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
And so the Student Education Records and Confidentiality Policy has passed for first passage. Next, we'll go on to a discussion and approval of the Title One Parent Involvement Policy for first passage. I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Capwell. Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So the Title One Parent Involvement Policy is a requirement through Title One. And so you have in your on your Chromebook, you have the the Title One Parent Involvement Policy for the 2021 school year. The policy, there there are no changes to the policy. I know that there were some some concerns and some questions earlier this year about the 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 PAC and the fact that there there isn't currently a PAC. But the PAC, we're we're hoping that the PAC is is resurrected as as we move into next year. But the 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 main changes to to the document from from last year to from this current year to next year are are really just just years and 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 dates in that. So there really are no changes to that to that document.
Dr. McGee, is this policy going to the Subcommittee, the Policy Subcommittee? Should they be reviewing this before we take action or?
We 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 didn't. I mean, I suppose we I suppose we could. But we we I actually, I, to be honest, I hadn't even thought of that.
Mr. Chairman, it comes under the directory of of Title One, correct?
Correct.
So maybe that's why it stays in the the administration or the literacy department because it does come under Title One.
Let's let's ask our attorney. Caroline, what do you think?
I I don't think that I I don't see why it would necessarily need to go to the Policy Subcommittee, particularly if it's, for example, a time-sensitive policy that needs to be passed swiftly. We're always happy to look at it from just a a legal perspective to vet it and ensure that there aren't any issues legally with the policy, if that's something that you would like us to do. So I but.
I'm looking at it. Is it something that should have gone? But you're telling it it sounds like you're telling me it it doesn't need to because this was basically a change of dates of a policy that existed. I'm just looking at this, it's first passage. It sounds like it's a brand-new policy, not something that's being amended.
It's it's not a first policy. Dr. McGee, could I weigh in for just a second and talk about how we tried to work this in previous years and compared to this year? Would that be helpful?
Yeah.
That'd be great.
So in previous years, when the PAC existed, it it there was a very detailed process for how the policy was reviewed. It's a federal requirement to have a parent involvement policy. It's pretty prescriptive of what needs to be in the policy to meet the Title One requirements. But because the PAC A didn't exist and because of distance learning and COVID nineteen, it was apparent that we couldn't convene a meeting to review the policy as it is described. So what I did do was create a survey for parents that was shared with each PTO president to share with. And I I've shared the results with Dr. McGee as well so that all parents at all schools that are participating in Title One could read the policy and make any suggested changes. And because there were none, we had more parents, quite honestly, read the policy and sign off on it than any previous year since I've been here to participate in the review process. And there were no revisions. The only revision that was made was the date.
Now, do we have active parent groups at this point?
We do.
Now, have they have they looked at this looked at the policy to see if there's any changes other than a date?
Yes, that's that the the policy was shared electronically through the survey. And the survey attached the actual policy for them to review and comment and send back comments and then approve or revise checklist. And it was unanimously approved. One parent did make a suggestion, but the suggestion for revisal had something to do with special education, which is not contained under Title One federal requirements. So that is not applicable.
Okay. It sounds to me like we don't have to go through the Policy Subcommittee. Any thoughts, Mrs. Kepiscus?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to clarify with as Chair of the the Policy Subcommittee, and I certainly don't mean to speak for them. If the changes aren't substantive, which these are not, they're simply ministerial acts updating the policy by the years we're referencing them to. I really don't think it's necessary to go before the Policy Subcommittee. If we were making a substantive change, I would disagree. But these are just ministerial changes. So I I would agree that it's not necessary.
Very good. Any any other comments? Dr. McGee. Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
And so Title One Parent Involvement Policy for first passage is passed for first passage. I believe we have no other business on our agenda. Yes. Hello? Now, I'll make a motion to adjourn at seven forty-seven P M. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Capwell and Mrs. Kepiscus, Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borje. Vice Chair Burke.
Okay.
Mrs. Capwell. Mrs. Kepiscus.
Oh, yes.
Thank you so much, everyone, for joining us.
Bye, thank you.
I'll see some of you tomorrow.
Yes, we will see you tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
See you tomorrow.
Take care, good night.
Bye-bye now.
Bye.
Where are we? See ya. Rebecca, Rebecca.